Now we'll move on to the next announcement by the council, which has to do with the statement by the Durham City Council on international police exchanges. The council will be voting on this this evening, whether or not to approve this statement. I read the statement, and it was discussed by council members at our work session 10 days ago, after a lengthy process of discussion and hearing from our community. And since that time, we've heard from many more of you. Thank you. We enjoy hearing from you. And we have many people who've signed up, almost 50 people, to speak. So here's what we're going to do. I'm going to read the statement again. It's not very long. At that point, I will ask any council member that has a comment at that point to comment. But then we will have comments from the public. And then I will ask my council colleagues again to discuss it. I think that's probably when most of our discussion will take place as a council. Since we have 50 people who have signed up to speak, I'm going to give everyone two minutes. If you had planned on three minutes, which is what we mostly give when we have 10 speakers or something, please rearrange your comments into two minutes. We're strict. There is a timer right over here that the city clerk will be operating. You will be standing over at this podium. And when the two minutes are done, the two minutes are seriously done. I'm now going to read the statement. Statement by the Durham City Council on international police exchanges. The Durham City Council appreciates receipt of the memo dated April 4th, 2018, from Chief CJ Davis, the City Manager Tom Bonfield stating that, quote, "There has been no effort while I have served as chief of police to initiate or participate in any exchange to Israel, nor do I have any intention to do so." The Durham City Council endorses this statement by Chief Davis and affirms his policy that the Durham Police Department will not engage in such exchanges. The council opposes international exchanges with any country in which Durham officers receive military-style training, since such exchanges do not support the kind of policing we want here in the city of Durham. We recognize and share the deep concern about militarization of police forces around the country. We know that racial profiling and its subsequent harms to communities of color have plagued policing in our nation and in our own community. In Durham, our community is working towards a time when we are beyond policing, when everyone has a good job and excellent healthcare and a safe, warm, affordable place to live. Until that time comes, we want policing that is founded on earning the trust of the community. We want policing that effectively reduces gun violence without any racial profiling ever. We want policing in a justice system that do not criminalize small acts such as drug possession. We are moving in that direction in Durham. Under the strong, persistent leadership of Chief Davis and her staff, the police department is undergoing a profound cultural shift, which is evident in the numbers and the annual reports we have just received for 2017. The reporting shows that while violent crime is on a 17-year downward trend in Durham, we are also undergoing an extremely dramatic shift in the way Durham is engaging in police work. Traffic stops in recent years have dropped from 32,227 to 11,578. Searches of cars have dropped from 1,296 in 2013 to 416 in 2017. Charges for drug violations in Durham are down from 1,223 in 2015 to 673 this past year. Our new misdemeanor diversion court has kept hundreds of first-time offenders free of a criminal record. Use-of-force complaints by residents are down from 33 in 2016 to 15 last year. Chief Davis' new U-Visa policy has resulted in immediate improvement for undocumented residents who assist in solving crimes, as 35 residents received U-Visa approval from the department in the first quarter of 2018, far more than ever before. An array of new police department policies and practices are working in Durham. And as the numbers above show with striking clarity, these reforms are today making a positive difference in lives of thousands of people, especially in communities of color. The council knows that we still have much progress to make. Although police searches have dropped precipitously among all groups, black motorists are still more likely to be searched than white motorists. And we need to continue efforts to ensure that the racial makeup of our police department more nearly represents Durham's diversity. The council is deeply committed to this work, and we are grateful to Chief Davis for leading this cultural shift. Black lives matter. We can make that phrase real in Durham by rejecting the militarization of our police force in favor of a different kind of policing. And that is what we are doing in Durham now. So that's the statement. And I'm going to ask now if any brief comments from my council colleagues, after which we will hear from members of the public. Council members? All righty, thank you. We're now going to hear from members of the public. This is not a public hearing. It's not a public hearing format. It's not going to be everybody for and everybody against. At different times in the program, I'm going to call your name. When I call your name, I would like you to please come over here to the podium and await your turn. And I will begin by calling Jane Wagstaff, Mohammed Eid, Larry Beckler, Richard Ford, Kay Robert Volkwine, and Tanad Shawah. If you all could please all come over here in the order I called you, that would be great. So Jane Wagstaff, you're our first speaker. Jane Wagstaff here?
She's coming. She's at the door right now. There's two seats up here.
Jane Wagstaff, are you in the room? Please come up. You're our first speaker. Ms. Wagstaff will be followed by Mohammed Eid, Larry Beckler, Richard Ford, Kay Robert Volkwine, Volkwine, I'm not sure if I got that right, and Tanad Shawah. So all of you all who have called your name, you need to be up here now. If you're not up here now, you won't be speaking, okay? Ms. Wagstaff?
Hello.
Just for all speakers, please give us your name and address. And you have two minutes. Ms. Wagstaff, welcome.
My name is Jane Wagstaff. I live in Pennington Place in Durham. And I'm just going to be very brief. I think the city is safer if we adopt best practices. There are lots of studies, I'm sure, on best practices, no matter where they come from. And we're all safer if the police are part of the community. And Durham's about to price the police out of this community. It is hard to live in this community on a policeman's salary. So if you want community policing, then you need to be able to have police who actually live here. So I think that's a very important piece of this. But we're all safer if we're looking at best practices and we're always open to best practices wherever it comes from and do the job that they're hired to do and insist on the best quality and training for the people that they hire. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wagstaff. We'll now hear from Mohammed Eid. Mr. Eid, please state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mohammed Eid. I live in Carver, Collins Crossing, 501 Jones Ferry Road. Originally, I'm from Gaza Strip, Palestine. I came here last August. Since I came here, I haven't met but friendly, kind, and generous people, people I care for. I've been in a peaceful community. I came here today to give my testimony for I care for this community. I won't bother you with all the stories about the IDF storming my village since I was 12 years old, when I had to wake up at night at the sound of dogs barking inside my house, at the scene of my father being beaten down to the ground, at the scene of my mother and my siblings being pushed around and shouted at. I won't tell you about the humiliating interrogation I had to go through on the checkpoints on my way out of Gaza Strip. I'll just ask you to search on YouTube Gaza Ma'as Shuv Retan, Mary with a flag, and see my neighbor, a 14-year-old, a 14-year-old girl called Mary, being shot in her leg, and watch the people carry her away, and watch her legs swinging around as the bone is literally being crushed by the bullet. Sorry. Watch carefully, because you must know well what practices will be brought back home. Search soldiers' laugh when Israeli sniper kills innocent elderly Palestinian, and watch the ethics your men will be learning overseas. Watch and think of your own mothers and grandmothers. Search sniper shooting Palestinian on Gaza border, and watch how the officer commands the soldier to aim at the boy, a very young boy, shooting him, and they both cheer in excitement. Watch and watch and think of what you will be bringing back to the place you call home, because once your home is ruined, you will never enjoy life anywhere else. For that reason, I support the policy statement against Israel police exchanges, and I support the Demilitarize Durham to Palestine campaign. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. I know you're going to want to applaud. There are 50 speakers, okay? At the very end, you can applaud as much as you want. But I'm going to ask you all to please hold your applause so we can get through this, and everybody gets the respect that they deserve, okay? So please hold your applause. Thank you so much. Larry Beckler.
Yes, Larry Beckler, Durham, Lakers Court in Durham. I'm a little confused by all the issues. I first became aware of the general topic last Thursday. I think at minimum, this can be considered a very liquid, or fluid, rather, situation. I've been around now for about 70 years. And I was nine when Nikita Khrushchev said, "We'll bury you from within." That was in November of '56. I think Russia's done a very good job of trying to keep its word. In a recent vote, over half of the millennials said they thought socialism is a good idea. Never mind that it's never worked anywhere it's been tried. I draw this correlation between communism, the US, and Israel because the communists have always had a real problem with God and Jews in particular. I'd like to discuss races for Israel, as was stated in a comment. I'd like to point out that in '84 was Operation Moses, and in 1991, Operation Solomon. And that's when Israel went into Ethiopia and rescued black Jews who had refused to give up their faith and brought them to live in their homeland. They're called the Beta Israel Community and the largest Beta community in the world. Terrorists. I have to comment that the ruling body in Israel is the Knesset. It's made up of Jews, Gentiles, women, and Muslims. And what I was interested to find out is that the percentage of Muslims on the Knesset is actually more than the percentage of Muslims in the country. I'm going to skip to the end. I would like to respectfully suggest a word of caution for the council. The Bible says those who bless Israel will be blessed, and those who curse Israel will be cursed. If you curse Israel today or in the future, I believe you'll bring woe upon Durham, North Carolina, and the US. Jerusalem is the kingdom of God. Baruch shem kavod, malchusso, leh lom boed. Blessed art thou, Lord our God, King of the universe, forever. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Beckler.
Richard Ford, 6416 Falcon Bridge Road, Durham. I am the chair of the Friends of Durham. The Friends of Durham do not have a position on the Palestinian-Israeli conflict. However, we wonder why the city council feels the need to take up a position on this. There are real problems facing this city, and the Palestinian situation is not one of them. And further, nobody has ever suggested sending Durham policemen to Israel for training. Just look at the letter you've published from Chief Davis. So this entire discussion is much ado about nothing, in my opinion, and is pursuing an insult to our chief and the police force. It is ignoring the advice of rabbis representing the arc of Jewish faith in Durham. If the council is going to work on this issue, and not Durham issues such as public safety, affordable housing, homelessness, transportation, et cetera, then one wonders what is the council's job. The proponents tout that Durham will be the first city to adopt such a resolution. You know why no other city council has done so, because it has nothing to do with the city council. This council will end up helping the activist groups say, "Oh, a city, a public body, has supported them." That's what happened when I was on the Human Relations Commission with reports on the police and the jail. Before this meeting goes over, the proponents will have a press release out on this. Is this what we are doing with our city council? Please do not take this action. Table the resolution. Go speak at any meeting you want. But don't pretend that this is city council business or that you speak for the city on this matter. The Friends of Durham concentrate on Durham elections and issues. I hope that the city council will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Now Kay Robert Volkwine. And while you're coming forth, Mr. Volkwine, I'm going to call the next speakers. I would like to ask you to line up behind them as well. Sandra Corn, Gabriel Liberty, Jasmine Williams, Jack Stanley, Ralph McCoy, and Jonathan Diane. If you all could come and stand over here as well, that would be great. Mr. Volkwine.
My name is Kay Robert Volkwine, and I live at 605 Sanderson Drive in Durham, North Carolina. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to address you on this important issue. Let me start off with a quote from Nelson Mandela. "You must use time wisely and forever realize that time is always right to do right." To make this policy that Durham will not send officers to Israel to be trained and to make it into law is indeed something that is the right thing to do. Too many times, in Durham and elsewhere in this country, police have caused pain and sadness, especially if they have been trained by the IDF. For, as we can see in the last few weeks, the way in which the IDF has handled peaceful protest is not the way we want our peace officers to act. Let the city council do right so that they can be on the right side of history. Nelson Mandela, again, it always seems impossible until it is done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Volkwine. And now I believe that we, now I believe we have Jihad Shawah. Shawah?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I'm trying to get here with you that it's been feeding, but I can't find Vivian. She said, "It's here. It's a must that I show you one minute out of it." My name is Jihad Shawah again. And last time I was here, on the, you know, former mayor, I changed the name of the city, the City of Medes, I mean, City of Justice. I hope it's going to stay that way, City of Justice, when you were talking about the equality for Muslim. Now it's the time to talk about equality of human being. Thank you so much. Last time Sheila was hugged. And this time, I ask you to hug four of your administrations. Ms. Amos, and Ms. Brooks, Diana, Karmish, and Vivian. They are wonderful. So do hug them for me.
I will. Thank you.
Gentlemen right here, I don't know if you can. What do I need to do? Click it? Vivian, help. Time is running out. I can't even move it. Well, anyway, this guy here, you can't even, yes, you can see him. How do I turn that on? I want him to talk.
You push the triangle.
Anybody can help?
Excuse me. It's okay from the audience. You really don't need to.
Well, I gotta say, yeah, go ahead. This is, this is a Nazi, well, not Nazi, I'm sorry. That's a Zionism.
And then you've got the Israeli army, which I like to refer to as one of the most, one of the best-trained, best-equipped, best-fed terrorist organizations in the world.
That's the idea.
And yes, they have generals and they have nice uniforms. But their entire, their entire purpose is terrorism.
So that's why we will send our policemen.
I'll give you one example. Almost exactly four years ago, as Israel began its attack.
This is Israel, and this is a Zionism, born as a Zionism. And then he found the lying. He found all the intimidation. He found the theft.
Mr. Shawah.
That is being done with Palestinians.
Thank you. Your two minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Corn, followed by Gabriel Liberty. You have two minutes. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Sandra Corn, and I live at 803 North Street, Durham, North Carolina. For those of you who are here in support of the Demilitarize Durham to Palestine campaign and the policy statement against Israel police exchanges, would you just please rise with your hands or your bodies? Thank you. So I want to speak tonight about the power of coalition work and about where the Jewish community stands on this issue. I have had the immense honor of being part of the Demilitarize Durham to Palestine Coalition for the past two years. Straight and queer, students and elders, white, black, Latinx and Arab, Muslim, Christian, secular, and Jewish, we have come together with a shared vision for human rights and racial justice. This coalition and this city council exemplify what I love so much about Durham and why I've made this city my home. I'm a Jewish educator, a leader in my synagogue, and I'm so glad to see so many members of Durham's incredible Jewish community here tonight. My Jewish family and texts have taught me that if you can save a single life, it is as if you have saved the entire world. That's why I care so deeply about Palestinian human rights and why I mourn the protesters in Gaza who've been killed, 30, over 30, since the start of Passover. That's why I believe and agree with the city council that black lives matter. These are statements of Jewish values. So city councilors, I want you to know that you may be accused of antisemitism for passing the statement. I, a Jewish person, have been accused of antisemitism for my support for Palestinian human rights. But you should know that these accusations are just meant to threaten you away from sticking to your own values. The Durham community of all faiths rises behind you, and we will support you in making a statement that represents our city's progressive values. I support the policy statement against Israel police exchanges, and I support the Demilitarize Durham to Palestine campaign.
Thank you. Hold your applause, please. Gabriel Liberty. Mr. Liberty, welcome. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is, hello, my name is Gabriel Liberty. I live on Henningson Way in Durham, North Carolina, in Carolyn Forest. Based on my parents, you probably don't know this, but I'm actually an Israeli-American. I have four children who are also Israeli. And needless to say, I'm torn by this statement, as I agree with the second part of it. But the fact that Israel is mentioned in this doc, in your statement, makes it into an issue that I actually am against because it's a hard one for me because Israel, in my respect, is the most moral, most esteemed country in this world who has provided so much to this world that most people don't even understand through whether it's the technology in their cellphone to their laptops that they use every day or the health benefits that they receive through the medicines and the water that the world receives and the food that is used in order to grow food for the poor and the impoverished. And they've given so much through this because it is a Jewish tenet that we give back to this world. We make this world a better place than what we live in today. And what this statement does is it ostracizes us. It ostracizes us. It demeans us in a way that says you're different than the rest of the countries because you don't mention any other country who does terrible acts of violence on their own citizens, like what just happened in Syria. What you're doing is you're basically, you're putting emphasis on a country that tries so hard to do so good. And then there's so much hate. And because it is the only Jewish country in this world, that it is ostracized and separated from the rest of the world, whether it's through the UN or bodies like this that always does this to us, that we feel that we don't have a place to be. And we still continue will give, and we will continue to give, until we can't anymore. And hopefully, that day will never come, and my children will be able to live a free life and to be able to be who they want to be without the threat of being killed for simply being who they are and from the mother that they were born to.
Thank you, Mr. Liberty. Jasmine Williams. Ms. Williams, you have two minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Jasmine Williams. I live at 802 Underwood Avenue. I think a lot of people here probably understand why we don't want our police taking pointers from the Israeli military. But we also have to remember they shouldn't be taking tips from us either. Policing in this country is so violent and so historically racist that it shocks other countries. And black people make up triple the proportion of the population on the inside than they do in the country as a whole. And I say this as a black person, as a person who is Muslim, as a person who is indigenous to this land that we now call the United States. So when we're looking at a country that's in a state which a lot of people would describe as apartheid, I think the last place that they should look to to swap expertise with would be the people running the United States incarceration system. I support the ban exchanges, both for the sake of overpoliced people here, especially black and brown people, and in Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Jake Stanley. Mr. Stanley, you have two minutes.
Hi there, I'm Jake Stanley. I live at 200 Knox Circle in Durham. And I'm here as a millennial representing the North Carolina Piedmont Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America, sponsoring partner of this campaign. So as a democratic socialist, we believe in government truly by, for, and of the people. We are fighting alongside the groups today and many all over the country to transform the United States so that everyone, particularly black, indigenous, immigrant, LGBTQ, Muslim, and other oppressed communities can thrive, not merely survive on the scraps of a wildly unequal capitalist system. Freedom from the fear of state violence is essential to creating that thriving society. As we have seen in the past decade in the streets of Ferguson, Chicago, and Baltimore, the sidewalks of Staten Island, the neighborhoods of South Sacramento, and countless places in between, including just over the weekend with ICE, black and brown people are disproportionately threatened and killed by law enforcement. The militarization of police, municipal and county forces that look more and more like an army than peace officers, this compounds a systemic problem. We reject the idea that US police, from the leadership down to regular officers, have anything to learn from the Israeli military police, the enforcement arm of a racist apartheid state and a violent settler colonial project. We are encouraged by Durham's efforts to reform the police towards supportive and accountability to Durhamites, especially our communities of color, although we agree with Mayor Schul and the council that there is much more work to do. We want to focus on improving other measures of public safety, like affordable housing and healthcare, strong public education, and a livable wage. Therefore, we join this call for the Durham City Council to create a new policy that unconditionally bars police exchange exchanges with Israel or other foreign militaries and police. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Ralph McCoy. Mr. McCoy, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Ralph McCoy, 4305 Myers Park Drive, Durham. I keep on my cellphone a picture of a 13-year-old boy, Ahmad Abol Daco. On November the 9th, 2012, I was with an interfaith delegation in Gaza when we received a call from a UN representative asking us to come to a local village. There, we met Ahmad's parents. The previous day, Ahmed was playing soccer with friends in front of his home. He was shot by an IDF soldier from an Israeli helicopter. The Israeli military was in Gaza illegally clearing terrain beside the wall that imprisons that land. Ahmed ran to his front door and fell dead. Since his death, over 700 children have been killed by Israeli police and military, most from indiscriminate fire. It's impossible to express the grief of his parents that day. Only Cindy and Craig Corey, our leaders on that delegation, could understand their unspeakable loss. Their daughter Rachel was run over and killed by an Israeli military bulldozer while protesting the demolition of a Palestinian home in 2003. There was never any public investigation or explanation of why the IDF soldier shot Ahmed. During the past three weeks, men, women, and children in Gaza have been protesting a 50-year occupation and illegal imprisonment. They have been shot by Israeli military snipers. Is this... Is this the type of culture that we want the Durham police to have training in? I support the policy against Israel police and military exchange. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Before the next speaker comes forward, I'm going to ask to line up also Dr. Burhan Ghanayim, William Rosenberg, Faisal Khan, I hope I have that name right, Laura Gutman. And I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading this one. Lara Hartash, perhaps? And Max Churman. If you all could please line up behind Mr. Diane in order, that would be great. Mr. Diane, thank you for being here. You have two minutes.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, council members. Jonathan Diane, I live on Anderson Street in Duke Forest in Durham. We moved here seven years ago to be transient, and we loved Durham so much that we decided to stay in this wonderful city, build a, a new business here. And ironically, our business is mainly bringing money from Israel for lower income investments, building housing for lower income in Durham. So I hope that in the end of this evening, we will find a reason for more investments coming to Durham, that we are more inclusive. The beautiful part about this council is everything that was said in the beginning. So all the proclamations, our wonderful achievements in, in Central University, all of this is all inclusive, is all what we love about Durham. Then comes a statement that ninety-five percent of it is great, but it starts with some kind of racist dividing line. And it says Israel. It doesn't say Syria, doesn't say South American countries that are oppressive. And the, the ironic part of it is that no one here that spoke up to now said a word about policing. They all talked about military. Now, if the, if the statement's idea is to bring up the problems between Palestine and Israel, it did a wonderful job. If the statement idea is to keep Durham unified with the great police that has a future and keeps its citizens safe, then leave out Israel. Just talk about what, what the, the issues are, and don't bring up this divi, look at, we're half-half. Yes, some people clap a little bit more, less, clap a little bit less, but we all love each other in the end, if we love Durham, okay? Let's put aside Israel and Palestine, make a, make a statement again with, for the police, build Durham, leave, leave the politics for others to deal with right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diane. Dr. Burhan Ghanayim. You have two minutes, sir.
Thank you. I, I, I'm sure my family in occupied Palestine dream of having this right that we all are enjoying tonight. My name is Burhan Ghanayim. I am Durham resident for more than thirty-five years. I stand here today in support of the policy statement to be considered by the city council. Just in the last two weeks in the Palestinian territory of Gaza, we have witnessed this deadly force by the Israeli army that is used against Palestinian protesters. Over thirty-five people were killed, over a thousand people were injured. Their fault was demanding freedom and return of the stolen land and homes that they lost. This is not new. I was the victim of brutal beating as a teenager in my high school in occupied Palestine, when the Israeli army stormed our high school, came into our classes, and beat us with no mercy or reason, all the reason we were protesting the presence of soldiers on our high school grounds. That was our fault. Israeli military tactics, this is the tactics that they are trying to sell to the city of Durham and other cities in the United States, how to suppress crowds, how curtail freedoms. Israel markets these tactics as tested and tried on Palestinians. We wholeheartedly endorse the proposed statement. I like to assure all of my Durham fellow neighbors that this coalition today is not antisemitic. It is against antisemitism. It is against racism. It's against brutalities against minorities, people of color. I extend my hand to all of you who oppose this, to come and join me in support of this statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ghanayim. Dr. Ghanayim. William Rosenberg, please come forward. You have two minutes, and please state your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is William Rosenberg. I'm a resident of RTP in Cary, but I have a strong interest in what's happening here. My request is that you table this statement at this time until you can measure and understand the full impact of what it means to Durham. Please understand that if the Durham City Council passes this statement outside of the Durham City Council, it will be widely recognized and widely publicized as anti-Israeli and antisemitic. That will adversely affect the broad interests of Durham in business, home values, schools, and universities. So I request one thing, that you table this until you actually measure and understand the long-term impacts that this action could have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. We'll now hear from Faisal Khan. You have two minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Faisal Khan, 501 Jones Ferry Road, Carboro. Thank you very much, Mayor, council members, and everybody else in the audience for giving the opportunity to speak on this very important issue. I want to ask all the council members, including the mayor, to ask this question to yourself, to your conscience. Would you support what ICE did this, this past weekend? Because they are doing exactly the same thing as what the Israeli police and IDF are doing in occupied territories of Palestine. I want you to ask this question to yourself. How would a two-year-old child would ask for help when his or her house is invaded by the intelligence community of Israel, or IDF, or the Israeli police? How would that child would ask for help? How did this child ask for help when the ICE agent stormed into that apartment? Or in Carboro? Or in Chicago? Or in LA? Because we are dealing with the same issue here. This is not a political issue. This is a human rights issue. This is the dignity of Palestinians living in Gaza, which is part of Palestine, living in West Bank, which is part of Palestine, East Jerusalem, which is part of Palestine. Very simple. I'm really disturbed what is happening in this country right now. It's unprecedented and unacceptable. We should not have any training exchange programs with the Durham Police Department or any Israeli intelligence, police, or IDF. It's unacceptable. So I ask you, support this statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you to hold your applause, please? Laura Gutman, please come forward. You have two minutes.
Members of the council, audience, I'm Laura Gutman, and I live on Watts Avenue. I've been there for forty-seven years. I'm, wanted to comment on the proposal, which appears to be a proposal having to do with the training of the Durham County, of the Durham City Law Enforcement Agents. We have a very fine chief of police who was recruited very carefully. She comes with an enormously credible reputation nationally. She's a very fine, exceptional recruit. Part of the usual expectations of the chief of police is that she will determine the appropriate training for the police officers. And this statement is going to compromise that and removes that from her full purview. I think this is profoundly disrespectful for a highly professional member of, of our community who was brought to us, I think by perhaps members of this council. In any case, I think that, again, that this is very disrespectful, and I urge you to return this, the, the ability of, of, of her ability to train, to decision, the, the decisions to train her own officers for the appropriate roles which they have to play. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gutman. Now we'll hear from Lara Huntash. Not sure I have that right.
Hi, my name is Lama Abu Huntash, and I live at Duke University. Since nineteen sixty-seven, forty percent of Palestinian men and twenty percent of Palestinian women have been in prison at some point in their lives. In so, in some ways, the ones who make it to prison with their limbs and lives intact are the lucky ones. These IDF soldiers incarcerate, mutilate, and often kill young Palestinian men to prevent them from fighting back against apartheid. In fact, of my mother's twenty-four male cousins in the West Bank, twenty-three have been arrested on trumped-up charges, virtually all were beaten, and many were brutally tortured in Israeli prisons against the Geneva Convention. This institutionalized system of prejudice and mass incarceration is mirrored here in the US, which boasts the world's largest prison population and is disproportionately composed of Black men. In the words of Angela Davis, Palestinians and Black Americans are in the same state, the carceral state, which is alive and growing here in Durham. The Durham police are supposed to serve and protect our community, but IDF soldiers neither serve nor protect Palestine, they occupy it. By engaging in police exchanges, Durham's department is learning to enhance racial profiling, use excessive force, and police the community like an occupying military. Just yesterday, I had probably the scariest experience of my life not involving an IDF machine gun, when I woke up to a text from my friend saying he'd been arrested. While walking on Duke Central Campus the night before, a police officer had stopped him and asked for his identification, but he wasn't carrying his Duke ID. He was later handcuffed and held in police custody until his roommate confirmed that he is in fact a Duke student. But why hadn't he, visibly college-aged person on a busy campus been singled out as if he didn't belong? Because he's a young Black man. These are your tax dollars at work, racial profiling, and presumption of guilt courtesy of the IDF. The Durham Police Department must reflect the community it serves, not the Israeli military. We must end police exchanges. I support the, this resolution to end Israeli police exchanges at Durham. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Max Churman, you have two minutes. As Mr. Churman comes up, I'm going to call out the names of the next group of speakers, and if you'll come over here to my right and line up, that would be great. And Jenny Blass, David Roswell, Jerome Fox, Carol Fox, David T H E U R E, baby, Thurrer, not sure, you live on Demaria Street, you know who you are, Rabbi Zalman Blooming, and Lee Mortimer. If you all could please come over here to my right, and you will be following Mr. Churman. Mr. Churman, thank you for being here. Please tell us your name and the address.
Hi, I'm Max Churman. I'm also a student at Duke. Today we are faced with a non-issue. Non, no ongoing Durham police cooperation with any military exists, nor would it be likely. Chief Davis asserted her one visit to Israel was a goodwill trip focused solely on leadership development and public relations with homeless populations. She should not be misrepresented by this council. Despite a letter signed by ten esteemed diverse local rabbis warning against targeting Israel, certain members of this council joined the, joined petitioners and put political interests ahead of the community they serve. Is this consistent with a Durham for All? Will these members have the professionalism to become proximate with the Jewish, with the concerned Jewish community? Or will they continue their sly machinations while fleeing from accountability to their constituents? Note this. Students for Justice in Palestine at Duke University, a group closely tied with the petitioners, ignores the terrorist group Hamas's genocidal ambitions and suggests Israel provokes wars in Gaza to use it as a human laboratory of experimentation subjects for testing its advanced weapons in intelligent systems for economic gain. It's 2018, and the Jews are again being basistly and shamelessly accused of heartless manipulation, murder, et cetera, for economic gain. This must be stopped. However, it seems like the council today is intent on sending its message. The message it sends is a resounding one. If you are a business owner or an individual looking for a community to call home, don't you seek a community built on respect, honesty, and trust? Not one that stabs you in the back? Shouldn't your elected leaders care about serving their hard-working constituents, not narrow political interests? Today, the Jewish community has been misled and ignored. Tomorrow, it could be you.
Thank you, Mr. Churman. We'll now hear from Jenny Blass. Ms. Blass, please tell us your name and address. You have two minutes.
Jenny Blass, Odys Road, Chapel Hill. Not, not Durham, but I know a lot, but I go to a shul in the area, and I know a lot of people who live here. Anyway, I'm Jewish and proud of my religion and heritage, and that extends to the state of, and that extends to the state of Israel. The insinuations that the state of Israel, with, where I have family, is racist and supports white supremacy are extremely harmful to me. I feel that what Israel does has been misconstrued by many people in this room. Israel only fights in self-defense, and the Israelis want peace as much as the Palestinians. The labeling of Israel in particular is violent and militant, is offensive to me as a person, and is hints of antisemitism. I'm not saying that this issue isn't worth discussing. I just think we, that we need to take a look at the motivations, in particular, political ones, that are behind this controversy. I hope Durham and the Research Triangle as a whole will continue to be welcoming to people who identify with Israel like I do. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blass. Now we'll hear from David Roswell. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm David Roswell. I live at 106 West Woodridge Drive in Durham. I'm a member of the People's Alliance, and I'm reading a statement written by the People's Alliance in support of the campaign. Dear Mayor Shul and members of the Durham City Council, we are writing to express the support of the Durham People's Alliance with a campaign led by the Durham to Palestine Coalition to preclude, to preclude any collaboration between the Durham Police Department and the Israeli Defense Force. We strongly support the message in Mayor Shul's statement that the council opposes international exchanges with any country in which Durham officers receive military-style training, since such exchanges do not support the kind of policing we want here in the city of Durham. We ask the, the city council to act on that message and to pass a resolution that clearly expresses the city's commitment to pursue community safety without resort to the kind of military tactics used by the Israeli police against Palestinians. Policing in the US has a long history of violence against Black and Brown communities. While the Durham Police Department under Chief CJ Davis has begun to make progress in reducing the incidents, the incidence of targeting and violence against Black and Brown communities, including immigrant communities, we want to see continued progress and more demilitarization, not less. The Demilitarized Durham to Palestine, Palestine Campaign is based on the finding that police exchanges between the US and Israel promote militarized policing at home and overseas. And we have seen, under the Trump administration, the language of security and counterterrorism being used to enable racist scapegoating and justify violent and discriminatory practices against targeted communities. Now, more than ever, we need to challenge the idea that our security comes from militaries, police, prisons, and border walls, and work towards a safer world for all people based on community, equality, and justice. The People's Alliance believes that Durham can best promote public safety by moving ahead on the vision laid out by the mayor in his State of the City address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from Jerome Fox.
My name is Jerome Fox. I live on 13 Mandy Court here in Durham. I'm one of the rabbis who sent the letter to the council urging you not to single out the state of Israel in your con- the state of Israel in your condemnation or your problems you're having with police training. And I've had a lot to say, but I'm going to have to cut it, I know. I want to say that the group that is fomenting that is called the Jewish Voice for Peace. And that sounds very nice, but one of them came to a seminar I was teaching just Thursday of last week, and she began to spout what I would call antisemitism. She said the Israeli army is a bunch of butchers, just as bad as ISIS. That's why I'm wearing the Israeli army skull cap tonight, by the way. And then she went on to say that she wants one state between the Jordan and the Mediterranean. And I said, well, then, you know, the Jews would eventually get outnumbered. And then the Palestinians there could democratically de-Judaize the state of Israel and throw out the national anthem, the Hebrew language, et cetera, et cetera. And I contend that any person who says that, who wants to de-Judaize the state of Israel, is an anti-Semi. And this particular young woman who came to my class, I believe, is a Jew. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Fox. Carol Fox, you have two minutes. Thank you for being here.
Okay, you're welcome. So my name is Carol Fox, and I live at 13 Mandy Court in Durham. And I would like to request of city council that you please remove mention of Israel or the Israeli police from your resolution on other matters concerning the city of Durham. Israel has no relevance to the issue of how Durham police does its job. Israel has no relevance to the issue of police brutality or unfair treatment of people of color or disabled people here in Durham or in the United States. Removing mention of Israel will make the proposed resolution stronger and clearer and less confusing. Removing mention of Israel from the resolution will prevent city council from muddying the waters in the issue of community policing and local city matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we will hear from David Thurrer.
Hi, y'all. I'm David Thurrer. I live on Demaria Street here in Durham, and I'm here representing the inside-outside alliance. We support the ban on police exchanges with Israel. We believe that the displacement of Palestinian people is unjust, and that it's important to disrupt the facade of normalcy. Such exchanges seek to create the occupation of Palestine. I haven't seen in the past few weeks the violence carried out against Palestinian protesters by Israeli security forces. We believe such exchanges would only further militarize Durham police. I can say personally, having been tear-gassed by the Durham police while peacefully protesting the death in custody of Chuy Huerta, that they are already dangerously militarized. Because of this, we support the policy statement against Israeli police exchanges, and we support the Demilitarize Durham to Palestine campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Rabbi Zalman Blooming.
Thank you, Your Honor, the mayor, and the city council. I have the greatest respect for you, and our community, and the Jewish community prays for your success and continued success each week in Shul. First of all, I want to thank you for bringing so many people together to speak about Israel right before her 70th birthday. I congratulate you on the 150th birthday of Durham, North Carolina, which we're going to be in one year from now, and over 3,000 years of the Jewish presence in the holy eternal capital, in the city of Jerusalem. But I have one request. My request is, let's make the city we love a city for all. I'm here less to talk about Israel and more to talk about Durham. As a rabbi that works with a lot of young adults and students here in this community, my phone has been ringing nonstop over the last week of young adults that live here that feel unsafe, that feel marginalized, that feel as if, for some reason, they've been singled out. And I'm not aspiring any judgments on the city council and what they meant, but language matters, and it affects. And I wonder, why, if a statement was made, why don't we consider this sensitively? There are many rabbis in our community. Was any of our rabbis spoken to? Were the heads of the Jewish Federation spoken to? So we can share the sensitivities about this very vital and very important issue. Look, I've been to Israel, I'd like to argue probably more than almost anyone in this room. I sat there a few months ago, a few weeks ago, by the Gaza border. I know what it is, huddling with young 18-year-old people who are fighting for their lives in this desperate battle. It's very, it is not simple at all. And I'm wondering, why would you single out Israel? You want to mention all countries in the world that you don't want to work with? Good luck. Feel free to. Israel doesn't need business. Israel's doing very well. But why? Why is Israel mentioned and singled out? And so, my only prayer to the city council, which does such incredible work, is, let's make the city we love a city for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Now we'll hear from, now we'll hear from Lee Mortimer. And while Mr. Mortimer is coming up, I'm going to ask these people to also come up, and to my right, Evelina Mulder, Tom Stern, Deborah Friedman, Elise Kristol, Mushka Blooming, and Ehab McCutty. And I believe that there's another Deborah Friedman. We have two of you. No, you're the same person. But you may not speak twice. Okay. All right. So now we're going to hear from Mr. Mortimer, followed by Ms. Mulder. Mr. Mortimer, welcome. You have two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Lee Mortimer. I live at 4116 Livingstone Place in the Trotter Ridge neighborhood. I'm a 30-year resident of Durham. Our son entered kindergarten here and went through Durham Public Schools. I participated in a number of civic activities, including serving on two task forces studying city-county merger. I was a youth soccer coach several seasons and a candidate for the school board in the year 2000. I think I did better as a soccer coach than in that school board election. I'm here tonight representing the Coalition for Peace with Justice. Our office is located at the Lion Park Community Center. We advocate for a peaceful resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. We have endorsed, and I have personally participated in, the Demilitarize Durham to Palestine campaign. We urge you to support this policy statement, putting the city of Durham on record as opposing members of our police department being trained by Israel's police and military. I don't know all the components of training that other U.S. police departments have undergone during often fully-paid trips to Israel. I do know that Israel has a well-documented record of human rights violations, and that our police would gain nothing worthwhile from being trained by a regime that holds a subject people under military occupation as it dispossesses them and colonizes their land. This is not, as some opponents claim, singling out only one country on the planet, Israel. Far too many regimes brutalize their subject populations. But Israel is the only one on which the U.S. government lavishes military, financial, and political support.
Hold your applause, please. Excuse me a second. Lee, excuse me one second. I'm serious about holding the applause. Okay, Lee.
And turns a blind eye to virtually every brutality it commits. Our police officers should not be trained in military-style surveillance of social movements, racial profiling, extreme crowd-control measures, and use of excessive force that can lead to de facto shoot-to-kill policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mortimer. Thank you. Your two minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from Evelina Mulder.
I'm Evelina Mulder. I live on Settlement Drive in Durham. I must admit, I'm perplexed. The statement on policing by the city council seems to be a response to a nonexistent problem. Police Chief Davis has indicated that there are no plans to train with police from other countries. So why is it necessary to issue a statement that there will be no training with Israel? I fear that the council, by issuing this statement, has become a pawn in a publicity initiative. I moved to Durham in part because it's a well-managed city with elected and appointed officials who share the values that I hold dear. This statement, as currently worded, demonizes Israel and by implication, the Jewish people. I am one of those Jewish people, and I'm a Durham resident. I have no vested interest in whether the Durham police train with the Israeli police, but I care deeply that Israel not be vilified and misrepresented. I care deeply that the council take the time to reword the statement, removing reference to Israel and thereby removing the unnecessary and politically motivated targeting and demonization of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mulder. Tom Stern, you have two minutes.
I am Tom Stern at 204 Rigsby Avenue. I have lived in Durham for over 30 years, and I am Jewish. I speak in opposition to those who seek to sabotage the council's courageous stand against further militarization of our police by quoting from the so-called omitted portion of Chief Davis's memo regarding her experience in Israel. Their position would have you believe that these police exchanges are simply about leadership academies and building relations with refugees and the homeless. Nothing could be further from the truth. Regardless of Chief Davis's specific experience, the major organizations facilitating police exchanges with Israel tout their focus on counterterrorism tactics. For example, I hold in my hand a recent Anti-Defamation League recruitment brochure for these police exchanges with Israel. It lists the training topics as preventing and responding to terrorist attacks, intelligence gathering, and the evolution of terrorist tactics. Two other major providers of these trainings state they are to strengthen law enforcement, counterterrorism practices, and security tactics. There is simply no denying that these trainings are inextricably linked to the militarization of Israel's police and security forces and serve to export that mindset and those tactics to police departments in the U.S. Further, the claim that Durham has not been complicit in these military-style trainings is also false. Former Police Chief Lopez attended one in 2008, and this ADL recruitment brochure lists Durham, North Carolina, as a police department that has participated in these military-style trainings. Think about that. The ADL is using Durham's good name without our permission to recruit more local police departments in the U.S. to further militarize their police departments. Durham needs to be clear that our police are community-based, we do not support racial profiling, we do not support disproportionate and violent responses to civilian protests, we do not see our own residents as the enemy. I support the city council's proposed new policy against these exchanges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Now we're going to hear from Deborah Friedman. Ms. Friedman, welcome. You have two minutes.
My name is Deborah Friedman, and I live on Hardscrabble Drive in Hillsborough, but I am a Durham taxpayer. Members of the council, many people in this room understand there are several different kinds of racism. One kind is obvious, it is in your face, use of the N-word, lynching. We have seen it all too often. Many of you also understand that there is racism that is more subtle: prison sentences that are longer for minority people, justice applied unequally, Confederate monuments. Since Jews have experienced this kind of racism, called antisemitism, for millennia, we have a long tradition of empathy and support for the African-American community's fight for equality. We are proud to have supported and provided such support. Some Jews have even sacrificed their lives for this cause. Just as there are different types of racism, there are different types of antisemitism. There is a swastika that even anyone in this room would recognize as an overt, obvious sign of antisemitism. Then there is the subtle kind that many in this room don't see. It comes in the form of a double standard of hypocrisy and scapegoating. That is exactly what is going on here. You should be ashamed to allow this to happen in Durham. It's clear that you need an explanation as to why this petition is racist, discriminatory, and antisemitic. It starts with the premise, a lie that is repeated so often that people believe it: that Israeli police teach militaristic tactics. Did you bother to investigate the validity of this accusation, or is it something that you simply accept as truth without question? Israel has world-renowned expertise, not only in counterterrorism, but also in how to assist during natural disasters, and in leadership, as Police Chief Davis knows firsthand. If the concern is international training in general, why don't you investigate Argentina, Greece, Haiti, Hungary?
Thank you, Ms. Friedman.
Thank you.
Elise Kristol, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Elise. I live on Princeton Avenue in Durham. I'm an American Jew. Last week, Mayor Protam Julian Johnson pointed out in her statement that there's no clear evidence that the police trainings with Israel lead to increased violence on the streets of U.S. cities. Of course, violence in the U.S. predates the state of Israel, the creation of the state, a state that, like the U.S., was founded on white supremacist ideologies, on ongoing dispossession of the indigenous population, and on ongoing violence directed at its non-white population. But we do have some anecdotal evidence. For example, in Washington, D.C., police adopted the Israeli tactic picked up when they went on a ride-along with the Jerusalem police of keeping the red and blue lights on their cruisers flashing at all times to be more visible, so that their presence is always felt, particularly in poor black neighborhoods. Rick Fuentes, superintendent of New Jersey State Police, said, "The knowledge gleaned from observation and training during the trip prompted significant changes to the organizational structure of the New Jersey State Police and brought about the creation of the Homeland Security Branch. This branch comprising nearly 1,000 members of the state police now maintains a steady state of vigilance in New Jersey," end quote. These strategies and policies adopted after the exchanges may appear benign, especially to those of us who are not used to being under constant surveillance. And maybe none of these police departments needed to travel to Israel to develop these plans, but they did. Is there a causal relationship between going on these exchanges and increased violence? We may never have empirical evidence, but we see in the current political climate the kind of racist scapegoating and support for discriminatory practices against targeted communities that isn't new. But now we have the opportunity to redefine safety and security on our own terms, in our own community, based on equality and justice. I support your statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kristol. And now we will hear from Mushka Blooming. Ms. Blooming, you have two minutes.
It's a wonderful honor to speak before you, dear mayor, and thank you for what you do for the city. It's also great to be able to talk about Israel, especially on the eve of her 70th birthday this week. As you know, North Carolina and Israel share a robust friendship built on economic cooperation and common values. For her 60th birthday, the General Assembly reaffirmed as the resolution states, "The people of Israel have established a vibrant pluralistic democratic political system, including a freedom of speech, press assembly, and religion." Israel is also one of North Carolina's top trading partners. Since 1996, Israel has partnered with close to 2 billion services from the Tar Heel State. The two have also shared millions of billions of dollars in bi-national grants, supporting their respective universities as they strive to make new technological and medical advances. As a statement called for North Carolina to honor 60th anniversary as a modern state, I would love for you to do the same and consider to do that for the 70th. As I'm sure you are familiar, House Bill 161, North Carolina recently signed publicly declaring support for Israel and legislating punitive measures against those boycotting the Jewish state divestment, the companies that boycott Israel. Yet, the language of what was bought by the council highlights schismism, and dividing those gives the wrong vibe about a very healthy relationship that truly exists. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blooming. While we're waiting to hear from Ehab McCutty, I'm going to call the following people up, and if you would, please come over to my right. Ahmad Amira, Mike Ross, Lee Mortimer, you cannot speak again, Adam Goldstein, Minister Rafiq Zaidi Muhammad, Stan Robaway, Peter Reitzes, and Reverend Curtis Gatewood. If you all would please come to my right. We will now hear from... If you all would please come to my right, we will now hear from...
Yehav Makati.
I'm sorry, I'm working on it.
Sorry.
Yehav Makati, sorry. If you would give us your name and address, and then you'll be followed by Ahmad Amira.
Yehav Makati, 511 Carlton Avenue. I also wrote the op-ed in the Herald Sun, which I provided to Councilmember Freeman. There are three comments that keep coming up that people seem to be confused by that I'd like to talk about. First, some people are asking, "Why do we care about Israel specifically? Is this a foreign policy statement?" They're asking, "Aren't there other countries that treat people worse?" And the answer is, "Not any countries that we give so much aid to. Because my tax dollars fund this police department, and because my tax dollars fund a militarized Israel, it is my personal responsibility to oppose any abuses from those two institutions." It's as simple as that. The second question is, "Is the city of Durham even taking part? Does Israel have a relationship with our PD?" And the answer is yes, and Tom Stern earlier brought the receipts, as recently as last December, in documents that are titled "National Counterterrorism Seminars." And so that leads into the third question, which is, "What's so wrong about counterterrorism training?" Two weeks ago, the Israeli military massacred protesters near a border fence in Gaza. You may have heard that a journalist critical of the occupation was among those killed by Israeli troops. You may have seen a video that emerged of snipers shooting a Palestinian protester who was standing harmlessly in the distance, as the soldier and his friends laughed and cheered at the shot. You may have heard the Israeli Defense Minister confirm that this was not an exception to the military culture, but was the encouraged practice, saying that the sniper should be decorated and the photographer should be condemned. If it's not obvious to you, this is what counterterrorism looks like in Israel. It doesn't have anything to do with minimizing violence, but with expanding the definition of terrorism so broadly that it means standing around a fence that the government doesn't like you to stand around. Americans are already terrorized by state violence at protests. Remember, the water cannons used in freezing temperatures on the indigenous people at Standing Rock, for example. Like the Palestinians, these were people who were standing up for their right to land stone from under them. Instead of protecting us, our police grow more and more each year to look like soldiers, and the violence that is enacted upon their victims isn't treated as a crime, but as an unavoidable or even heroic action. Whatever these two forces will learn from each other, it won't make me feel safer. We should make Durham a leader in true safety and ban these exchanges.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Ahmad Amira. Mr. Amira, you have two minutes.
Ahmad Amira, 51 Brody Dimm Drive, Go Duke. The Atlanta Police Department in 2014 said that Chief Davis's Atlanta exchanges, quote, "include training where officers learn tactics on preventing acts of terror," end quote. The Atlanta mayor defended these exchanges for their counterterrorism focus, and Donald Trump has applauded Israel for its racial profiling and has even used Israel's apartheid system as justification for his border wall and for his Muslim ban. At this point, city council needs to draw a clear line between counterterrorism and deadly racism. For Israel, the line blurs into one, and countless Palestinians have died as a result. Former Israeli Defense Minister Mashi Yalom has admitted to targeting civilians in Lebanon in 2006 and in Gaza in 2014. Current Defense Minister Avigdor Lieberman recently claimed that, quote, "There are no innocent people in Gaza," after he authorized the murder of dozens of unarmed Gazan protesters. Durham needs to take a stance against the intentional murder of civilians and not glorify atrocity by claiming Israel is some expert in counterterrorism. The countless hours of interrogation every Palestinian faces when traveling through Israel is not counterterrorism, it's racism. Israel's airport security, that uses a scale of one to six to identify an individual's threat level, is assigned by race. The six on my passport classifies me as an extreme threat to Israel. Calling me a terrorist just because I'm Palestinian, that's not counterterrorism, that's racism. Arresting teenagers in the West Bank like a head tamimi, merely waving flags and throwing rocks like those, that's not counterterrorism, that's excessive force, and that's deadly. I say, let's not glorify the deadly racism that Israel imposes upon the Palestinians it illegally occupies. Don't let the suffering the Palestinians face under the Israeli military become some model for policing in America. Reject racial profiling, reject police militarization, and put our black and brown communities here in America first. Black lives matter. We need to reach a point where those words represent the widely accepted truth and not some distant goal. Let's make a difference. Let's demilitarize Durham and free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mike Ross. We won't take your two minutes for that, Mr. Ross. Thank you very much. Mr. Ross, you have two minutes.
Thank you, mayor, and city council members for allowing me to speak. I had three main points, which I may not get to. First, JVP's pervasive demonization of Israel, as we see tonight, is a recipe for unending conflict. The Anti-Def... Two, the Anti-Defamation League, the premier Jewish organization fighting for social justice, has been targeted by JVP's initiative. And three, as we witnessed today, JVP is bringing the conflict and discord from the Middle East to our city council. First, in the petition, JVP disgracefully claims a direct link between U.S. police training in Israel to deliberate oppression of minorities here. There is absolutely no evidence for that smear, and teaching such hate will never lead to peace. Tonight, they will hijack this forum, as we've seen, to attack Israel. They will make claims which are accusing the one Jewish state of being entirely evil. Make that of what you will, but their statements will be a steady stream of accusations, more about instilling blame than being constructive. Mutual respect comes from cooperation and compromise, not continued incitement and conflict. Second, JVP has attacked the ADL, the ADL which sponsors trainings for police to combat hate crimes, to counter implicit bias, and to build trust with communities. Their courses in Israel focus on Israelis balancing of security concerns with the imperative to uphold civil rights. It is a gross inversion of reality to claim that the ADL is complicit in oppressing people of color. Third, as we see today, JVP is bringing the conflict to us. They are sowing division in the community by telling minorities that Israel and its supporters are to blame for police brutality against them. This lie leads to distrust, division, and inevitably hatred. I'd rather envision a Durham that is inclusive and tolerant. In summary, please do not support their divisive agenda. Please continue to be a welcoming city. Don't listen to people, either from the right or from the left, who want to tell you what to be afraid of and who's to blame for it.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Adam Goldstein.
Adam Goldstein, Ukiah Lane, Chapel Hill, North Carolina. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and thank you for your service on behalf of the people of Durham. My name is Adam Goldstein. I'm a family physician, have been involved in multiple leadership positions in the Durham Chapel Jewish community for almost two decades, including being past president of the Lerner School in Durham, past president of Durham Chapel Jewish Federation that supports over 5,000 Jewish families in this region and in Israel. I'm chair of the statewide North Carolina Hillel on 13 campuses throughout North Carolina for Jewish life on campus. Why do the majority of Jewish organizations and synagogue leaders see your current statement as anti-Israel and anti-Zionist? And why do some see overtones of antisemitism? These concerns as applied to Israel are not simply criticism, because we are all willing to criticize, as we are here in the United States at times, but it's when policies or statements are done that seek to delegitimize, demonize, and apply double standards to Israel. They're almost always done under the shadow of extreme prejudice, whether from the hatred and lies of the far right or the far left. The petition, which became a statement, started with a premise that was false and demonizing, and six council members signed it. Despite changing the petition to the statement, please take ownership that the sponsorship of the petition in this entire episode is designed to single out one country and one country only, not Iran, Syria, North Korea, China, or Russia, but Israel. You do so in conjunction with an organization known to demonize Israel, and you do so in a way that will harm Jewish life on campus and towns in North Carolina and Durham moving forward. Finally, you have the completely distorted Durham Police Department's chief glowing statement on Israel, trying to take one sentence out of context to support of you is not truly honest. You brought these petitions up during the Jewish holidays of Passover and right before the Jewish memorial in Israel for fallen soldiers. The whole statement, starting from a petition for an issue that doesn't even exist, along with your failure to consult with multiple Jewish leaders to discuss this impact, along with continuing to keep the name of Israel in the statement and distorting the Police Chief's statement, are blights on this great city unless changes are made tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Minister Rafiq Zaidi Muhammad. Sir, you have two minutes.
Good evening. To this council, deals, and local government body, I am Rafiq Zaidi Muhammad. I reside at 807 South Duke Street, Durham, North Carolina. I am a Muslim believer, a follower of the honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan in the Nation of Islam. I have been on the forefront with the Palestinian brothers and sisters in this country since 1975. I went to jail in Chicago for standing up for the Palestinian demonstration. But first and foremost tonight, I want to say this. I thank council very deeply from my heart, because the move that you have made to approve this petition was one against forces that are unseen. There's a synagogue of Satan that's always lingering in the background, as the Book of Revelation, the second, the third, and the third and the ninth say. They propose to be of the righteous, but they are a synagogue of Satan. And I want to say this to you tonight, first and foremost. Let it be known that as a citizen of the Nation of Islam and a resident of the city of Durham, I support the petition to prevent police exchanges between the Durham Police Force and the Israel, Israel Defense Forces, known as IGL. My words tonight, in the last 30 seconds, may draw widespread criticism from some in the community. But I am obligated to point out the inordinate control that some Jews have over the political system in this city. And I praise you and thank you for the inherent effort that you have made to make this proposal one that we all can deal with and stand firm on. Thank you very much, and may Almighty God Allah bless you and continue to intervene in all our affairs.
Minister Zaidi?
Yes, sir.
I'm one of those Jews, I just want you to know that.
No, I mean...
I'm one of those Jews, Mrs. Zaidi. Excuse me, sir. That is, I can't describe that as anything other than antisemitism, and just as I would speak out... Excuse me! And just as I would speak out against that, anything said about any other group, I'm afraid I'm going to have to speak out when it's said against a group of which I'm a member. I don't appreciate it, don't bring it in here again. Mr. Robway, you have two minutes.
Please hold the clock until I get my PowerPoint up.
Help, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Can I get some help?
I expect that they're about to run out and help you, that's what usually happens. So just give them a second, and the staff will be out here to give you a hand.
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
Hang on one second, believe me.
Thank you. Hi. This one right here.
Okay.
This is the advance button?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. Thank you. First, I want to say, my name is Stanley Robway, Circle Park Place in Chapel Hill. This whole process, to me, has been very bothersome. The petition that was brought was actually signed, the petition, by six of the members of this council, and some of the members of the council actually helped formulate the petition. In addition, there's a specific email that one of the council members sent. Thought I'd send this in case it has any use for future BDS purposes. Is my PowerPoint actually showing?
Yes.
Okay. Is this...
We can see it, Mr. Robway.
Pardon?
We can see it.
How does this go forward?
Won't go forward. Okay, there it is.
The last meeting that was held two weeks ago, to me, was a sham meeting. Several of us were called, we were given three minutes, we thought we were talking about the petition. At 1:25, we finished speaking. At exactly 2:35, 10 minutes later, the city council produced a statement that was given to the newspaper, a long statement that clearly could not have been written in 10 minutes. It was at least the day before. The chief's statement, as far as I'm concerned, was full of praise, and much was suppressed. This is what she wrote, and there are types of words that are saying, "It builds community, police relations, helps homeless, highly academic." All of that was left out. The only thing was, "We're not going to have a relation with Israel," which does not sound like what the chief meant. Then, at the same time, suddenly came this by the same group that's here. It's on the web, and it says, "No more police at Jewish synagogues." And in fact, it says, "There should be no more police departments." We might like not to have police, but just imagine what we would have in this country with no police departments at all. We single out here only Israel, but look at all the other countries, some 25.
Your time's up, Mr. Robway. Thank you. Peter Reitzes. And then, we will have Reverend Curtis Gatewood, and then I'm going to call some other names that can assemble over behind Mr. Gatewood. Bob Gutman, Michelle Laws, Buddy Bomsey, I'm sorry if I haven't got your name right there, Robert Hollister, and Rhino Rachel Gulper. If you all would, please make your way over there behind Minister Gatewood. That would be great. And in the meantime... I'm sorry. I'm being told I'm not being loud enough, for which I'm often not. Let me say it again. Thank you very much, Dr. Allison, I will try to be louder. Reverend Gatewood will be followed by Bob Gutman, Michelle Laws, Buddy Bomsey, Robert Hollister, Rhino Rachel Gulper. Yes, sir, Mr. Reitzes, thank you.
Thank you. My children's synagogue school in Durham not too long ago was faced with a bomb threat. The Durham police were there. I'd like to be the first person tonight to thank the Durham police for everything you do every day. Councilperson Gillian Johnson sent something that I think everyone in this room can agree upon. She recently said that it is not antisemitic to criticize Israeli policies and practice. But let me tell you what is antisemitic. This month, the city council received an email from one of the petitioners, and the email listed what the petitioner called savage military countries. And the petitioner said Argentina, Bolivia, Brazil, Colombia, and Costa Rica, just to name a few. There were about 20 countries. This city council ignores all of those countries that the petitioner says, and this city council says, "Let's focus on Israel, the only Jewish-majority country on the planet." My friends, that is antisemitism. Singling out Israel and forgetting about everybody else, that is antisemitism. During President Obama's administration, the Obama State Department defined antisemitism in relation to Israel with three examples: demonizing Israel, delegitimizing Israel, and holding Israel to double standards. If this council passes your statement tonight, you are doing all three things that the Obama administration said are antisemitic. I ask one thing: remove all mention of Israel from your statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Reverend Gatewood, you have two minutes. Please tell us your name and address, sir.
Let the church say amen. Amen. First, I'm Reverend Curtis Gatewood. I reside at 129 West Front Street, Oxford, North Carolina. I'm the founder of Justice Administration, which is Justice being the acronym for Jesus Uniting Souls to Increase Community Engagement. I'm also founder of Stop Killing Us Solutions Campaign. The basis for which I stand in solidarity with those who support the resolution is driven by my adamant opposition to the militarization of the police department in Durham or anywhere else in the world, first.
resolution now to lay to rest any questions. First reason being, if the Israeli Defense Force would use excessive force and wrong for death toward their own Palestinian neighbors, what makes us think they can train Durham Police to treat the struggling citizens of Oxford Manor, Bracktown, Medugal Terrace, Liberty Street, or Turnkey right, except to kill us or to turn the key to lock us up? What we would like to see is IDF know that the Durham East End and the West End are struggling to make ends meet.
Thank you very much, Minister Gatewood. Mr. Bob Gutman, you have two minutes.
How do I start this?
Hang on a second, and someone will come help you.
I'll get started. I have a picture of a baked cake on the first slide, because we know the cake is baked, and we're very sad about it because the name Israel was insisted on being there. In the lead-up to the petition initially presented, it was very clear that JVP, a notoriously anti-Zionist organization, included its chosen language to defame Israel. This is a national program that's been going on several years, and you are supporting it by inserting the name Israel almost gratuitously. I have, that's it, thank you. I have to ask, what was the point? What purpose did that serve the city of Durham? It's great to have a very well-formulated and very clear, kind, and thoughtful police policy, but why do you have to mention Israel? Only because you've decided to insert yourself in national and international politics for the sake of these people who come and notice that they have all said the same thing we're saying. They have all declared that they're for this because it defames Israel, just the same thing we're saying. They don't need to do that, or you don't need to do that, they do need to do that because that's what the national organization wants to happen. I just want to go, I was going to go through a bunch of slides showing you how many people on their side support what I'm saying. But I do want to just end by saying that when Mayor Shul ran, he gave two promises: strong support for Chief Davis's emphasis on de-escalation and racial equity training. That's a promise properly being kept. The next, another statement is, quote, "I will continue to work toward a police force that effectively fights violent crime while actively seeking to build the trust of our entire community." That's a promise that needs to be kept. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gutman. We'll now hear from Michelle Laws. Ms. Laws, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I really just want to come and offer my approval and just my hats off to the police chief for standing in a very difficult and uncomfortable place. I am a Jewish, Muslim, Hindu, Buddhist, loving Christian. The God I serve says that he has no respect of person. I come from a history, a family, a group of people who understand the danger of us holding on to these narratives embedded in historical documents, often revisionist histories, and our own interpretations of what the Lord means. The same slaveholders who held us captive and used my ancestors to create the largest profit margin in the world's economy, and we've never lost our footing as a nation since those almost 300 years of free labor were given, justified that by their religious doctrines. I also come because I do know that now is the time for us to be very clear as a nation, as a city, as a state, on where we stand in terms of the conflict between Israel and the Palestinians. Far too many children and women and disabled and elderly are losing their lives because men on both sides are refusing to come to the table and reason together as the good Lord our Creator has called us to do. And in terms of Israel, the United States entered in 2016 an agreement, a 10-year military assistance agreement with Israel that is worth over $38 billion. The diplomatic and military alliance between our two countries is insatuous, and it is the largest cumulative recipient Israel is of U.S. foreign assistance since World War II. Israel is not hurting in any kind of way, and largely it's because of our complicity.
Thank you. Thank you very...
Our children are, and women are.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Laws. We will now hear from Buddy Bomsey, I'm sorry I haven't gotten your name right, you have two minutes.
That's correct. Hello, my name is Buddy Bomsey, and I'm a lifelong Durham resident. I've attended charter and public schools, and I am now a junior at the North Carolina School of Science and Math. I have been active in local government for two years as a member of the Durham Youth Commission, and I am Jewish. I am here tonight to speak to the city council about the proposed statement regarding training of members of the Durham Police Department in Israel. Last week, a coalition of groups, many of which have missions that I support, presented a hateful petition to the Durham City Council called "Demilitarize From Durham to Palestine." This petition contained allegations that Israeli training of American police forces assists them in the practices of racism and racial profiling. Anyone who has studied American history knows that white supremacy and racism and the violent behavior related to such ideas has been ingrained in American society for more than four times as long as Israel has existed as a sovereign nation. From the time immediately after the Civil War up until the early 20th century, southern police forces would arrest African-Americans on baseless charges and then sell them via their bail price into neo-slavery. The claim that Israel influenced American racism is simply disingenuous. In response, Mayor Steve Shul crafted a statement in support of the petition. Though he does not directly mention Israel, some council members feel that by omitting Israel, his statement does not go far enough in meeting the goals of the petition. The proactive nature of this movement and the Durham City Council's response, when the Durham Police Department and Israel do not have a relationship in any capacity, lead me to believe that the most important goal of this petition is not the quality or improvement of our police force. These actions lead me to believe that the goal of this petition is to demonize and ultimately blight Israel. Further evidence of this goal is that a number of the supporting organizations believe in the Boycott-Divestment Sanctions Movement, which though advertised as an effort to support peace in the region, does no such thing. I am not here because I unanimously support Israel in any, in all situations or all policy decisions, but I cannot stand by as the state of Israel is slandered by false accusations or as my city government promotes such assertions. This petition is nothing more than a gratuitous attempt to have our progressive city participate in the last socially acceptable form of discrimination. I ask you to go no further in responding to this petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from Robert Hollister, and then Ms. Gulper, after her, after him, and then after, then we will be followed by these people, and these will be our last speakers in order, please, over to the right, Ron Baron. I believe this person's already spoken, this person's already spoken. Beth Brooke and Deborah Rosenstein, and those will be our last speakers. Anyone who feels that they've already signed up and I didn't call their name, you can let me know.
You called in.
You called in, okay. Dr. Allison, we'll get you. Thank you, we'll get you up here, thank you. Okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Hollister, welcome, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Robert Hollister, I live on North Lake Shore Drive in Chapel Hill, but I'm here as a representative of the Justice Ministry Council of the Eno River Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, which is on Garrett Road here in Durham. Our goal is to develop and support a vibrant local community based upon diversity, opportunity, equity, support, and protection. The realization of these goals depends to a considerable extent on the qualities of our police and judicial systems, because these are the institutions that either support or destroy public perceptions of trust, fairness, equity, and respect, which are the glue that hold us together as a society and as a community. Of particular concern is the increasing militarization of our police forces. These practices include training in military tactics, the provision of military-style assault rifles, combat dress, and the military equipment such as armored personnel carriers and mine-resistant and ambush protection vehicles. In your consideration of tonight's resolution, we respectfully request that the Durham Council consider the following: number one, the adoption of policies that prohibit the militarization of the local police force; number two, policies that prohibit the police force from applying to the Pentagon for military equipment; and number three, policies that prohibit the provision of foreign training for police officers in military-style procedures and tactics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll hear from Ms. Gulper.
Good evening, everybody, I'm sure it's been a long night, I'm very glad to be here. So, the Coalition has asked me to say that, just to affirm that we reject any support that comes from antisemitism, and that this previous speaker making those comments is not a member of our Coalition. And the other thing too, and this is just something that's really near and dear to my heart, this is not a Jewish issue. This is a human rights issue, and it's not about, for me personally, being against Israel and being called antisemitic, and there's been a lot of vitriolic and insulting comments and attempts to fire people who have opinions that are different than the conventional Jewish community. This is a human rights issue because honestly, we do not need intervention from Israel or any other country to come and tell us how our police force should be run, counterterrorism, militarization of police. We don't need any help to shoot and kill unarmed civilians and demonstrators. We don't need any help from a country whose human rights abuses are documented and has a record that is as bad as our own. And so my hope is that we'll actually be the Durham that I know we are, and I know that your hearts are in the right place already, and I'm just hoping that we do the right thing. I think we need to run our own affairs, and we have a lot of work to do without help from a country that surely has not a lot to offer in this regard. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Ron Baron, followed by Beth Brooke, followed by Deborah Rosenstein, and then we will hear from Dr. Levonia Allison, and that will be our last speaker.
I'm Ron Baron, 208 North Driver Street. I've been in Durham 15 years now. I'm originally Israeli and I'm Jewish. And I want to speak very strongly in support of the resolution tonight. I spent a long, much of my life in Israel, working with Palestinians, I go up around Palestinians, I was lucky to do so. My grandfather was one of the chief officers of a peace agreement between Egypt and Israel. In 2014, I was in Haifa during the Gaza War. We had a small demonstration opposing the war. We were saying slogans, I'll read them in Hebrew and English. "In Gaza and in Stilot, girls want to live." "Shalom rabonim al gurfot shul m'vgineim." Peace is not built on demonstrators' bodies. We were surrounded, our small demonstration was surrounded by over 1,000 right-wing demonstrators, including activists in a center-left party, the Labor Party. Brex were thrown at our heads, it was a miracle that no one was killed, the police barely intervened. Two days earlier, I was at a demonstration, a Palestinian demonstration for the same cause, which people were tear-gassed, shot with rubber bullets, and beaten by the same Israeli police. The Israeli police is one of the most racist police forces on the planet, and I don't think we should have anything to do with them. At the same time, in the same timeframe, our Durham Police was busy tear-gassing people in the streets, and I'm glad to see things have gotten better since. And I applaud Chief Davis for saying that no police exchange will ever take place. I urge you to make this formal policy tonight, and to have nothing to do with the Israeli police ever again. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Beth Brooke. You have two minutes, Ms. Brooke.
Thank you. I'm here as an American Jew, I've seen you at Shul, and I'm just in support of this statement. I want to just repeat that the Demilitarize Coalition is stating emphatically that we reject any support that comes from a place of antisemitism. We're an interfaith community that believes in demilitarization of police here and abroad, and one step is stopping our well-documented participation in police exchanges. We know that Chief Lopez went on a trip, we know that Chief Davis headed up the exchange program when she was in Atlanta. This is a time to pass such a policy before anything has a chance to start here. I also want to present you all with this letter from American Muslims for Palestine, Friends of Sibyl North America, and Jewish Voice for Peace, an interfaith clergy letter to Durham, which has already been turned into the clerk. It's been signed by 50 rabbis of Jewish Voice for Peace, Rabbinical Council, and 72 religious leaders, additional religious leaders, in Durham and North Carolina and the United States. So I want to give you all this statement in support of the campaign, Demilitarize Durham to Palestine campaign, and in support of your proposed policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brooke, you may hand that to the clerk. Dr. Allison, welcome, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much, I know I have two minutes, but I had the occasion to turn on my TV that ended up at C-SPAN 3, and I had to stop and listen because it was a group of persons hosted by Jay Street, a non-profit Jewish advocacy group. Then the next person was the Palestinian Liberation Organization, and I heard some fantastic speakers, speaking about how terribly they have treated Palestinians. And I'm here to thank you all that I came out tonight, I don't even need to be here. But I hope and I thank those of you who put this together, because at this point in time, it reminds me of two gentlemen that I had an opportunity, Jewish. Cecil Sheps, UNC Chapel Hill, organized something to help us try to figure out how we're going to improve the representation of Black health professionals. Benny Greenberg, another one, Chair of Social Work at Chapel Hill, and I was glad to come up here and say something positive. But you know, this is about peace, this is about doing what's right, not what's wrong, and I'm glad the police situation and all that came up, brought me out. Because I wouldn't, you know, we recently celebrated Martin Luther King. Basically, he was against militarism, racism, and above all, poverty. You know, there's so much that's happening to, right now, in those of us who are here saying, "Do your thing and stand on it." When you do something right, you're not anti-Israel, but if they're doing wrong, you have to stand up and say it. I'm not going to take much time, but I have some articles that I want you all to read, and I want to recommend North Carolina Regiment of Racial Subordination, Hindering Blacks. The story is here, gentrification. At this point, do what you're doing what's right. The peace problem, the police link started a long time ago, they were almost at it.
Thank you, Dr. Allison.
We were almost at it till they pulled somebody up and they...
Thank you, Dr. Allison. Is Deborah, excuse me, is Deborah Rosenstein here?
I'm here.
Ms. Rosenstein, Ms. Rosenstein, I'm not sure which it is, but you'll tell me, and we're glad to have you. Please tell us your name and address.
Thanks, my name's Deborah Rosenstein, I live on Davis Road in Hillsborough, North Carolina. Um...
"North Carolina Restatement of Racial Subordination Hindering Blacks." The story is here, gentrification. At this point, do what you're doing what's right. The peace problem, the police link started a long time ago. They were almost at it.
Thank you, Dr. Allison.
We were almost at it till they pulled somebody up and they "t you all fuck."
Thank you, Dr. Allison. Is Deborah, excuse me, is Deborah Rosenstein here?
I'm here.
Ms. Rosenstein, Ms. Rosenstein, I'm not sure which it is, but you'll tell me, and we're glad to have you. Please tell us your name and address.
Thanks. My name's Deborah Rosenstein. I live on Davis Road in Hillsborough, North Carolina. I wasn't going to speak tonight until I saw how charged things have become around Jewishness, antisemitism in Israel, and I knew I needed to speak. So while I stand before all of you as a Jewish person whose great-great-grandparents were murdered in their beds, actually, in a pogrom, I come before you as someone who's a human being in this community and in North Carolina at this moment. And I'm terrified of how militarized our police departments are becoming. And I really appreciate Javier and everyone where this started from with being about ICE. And to me, that's what this is about. I hope, people here tonight have mentioned that they're scared that you all are being manipulated and that this might spread. I hope this spreads because all of us who care about fighting racism and all of us who care about trying to have democracy maintained or exist in this country, we need to not have militarized police forces. The other thing I want to mention is that people have said, "Why are we picking on Israel in particular?" I believe this is true. I know it's true for me and others that I'm in coalition with here, that if any other oppressive government came forward to you all and tried to say, "We want to train your police force," that we would stand up here. I will stand up here again. But no one else is doing that right now, and no one else is receiving as much aid as we've talked about. So I guess what I also want to say is people have mentioned that we want to be a welcoming community. I want Durham County to be that, Orange County to be that. We can't be a welcoming community if we're being, if our police are being trained in military anti-terroristic tactics. So I say that to you as a Jewish person, as a woman, as a queer person, but mostly I say it to you as a human being in North Carolina. And I'm frightened for what's happening in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, y'all can clap as much as you want. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Council members, you have heard the speakers, and I want to express my thanks to all the speakers. I want to especially express my thanks to the young speakers, the students who came on both sides of the street. There were a lot of young people, and they had very different opinions from each other. And I really appreciate the fact that you were starting young to speak your conscience. And it's, I think it's especially courageous in a highly-charged and controversial atmosphere. And, but you did it, and you did it very well. So especially want to appreciate you. Council members, any comments at this point? Let me say that again. Council members, any comments at this point?
If I start, I want to finish, just so you know.
You have more than two minutes.
I just want to say that I really appreciate everyone coming out today and sharing their voice and speaking up on your truth and recognizing that everyone's voice does matter here. It's important to us as a council to hear you. And I'm overwhelmed with a joy and a hurt in understanding the tension of how this statement is kind of fracturing our community. I'm also overwhelmed with the fact of who I am as a person, as a human being, acknowledging that I have to stand in solidarity with the people that I feel that are most impacted and recognizing that the people of color in this country who are disproportionately targeted, whether immigrant, whether Black Lives, whether Standing Rock, whether, I mean, the list goes on and on. The place of which, where I come into this, is that. And I have to stand and say that it's not okay. It's just not for us to support a militarized police force or training of a militarized police force, recognizing that we are trying to decriminalize our police forces here in Durham. And I think that the information that was shared, I mean, I'm thankful that it was said repeatedly, you know, the $38 million that's paid to Israel as aid, billion, I'm sorry, billion dollars as aid. And the fact that, I really wanted to ask staff about how do we have our city removed from their literature, because it shouldn't be on there. I have no ill will towards Israel at all. I mean, I honestly and truly, I mean, as a human being, you just have to see that this is not okay. And it falls in line with the way in which things have happened throughout the course of history. And we have to know that this is not, this is not, for me, a religious battle. This is a human rights issue and recognizing that you cannot allow any armed person to shoot down someone else who is unarmed. I'll let the rest of the council say something.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, sir. How did we get here? I want you to look at how many people are in this room tonight. How did we get here? Where a declaration of what we hold as sacred and valuable in terms of our policing, how did it get conflated with this issue? The United States of America is the only nation in history that has ever written down the words, "All men are created equal." We're the only person, people that only actually wrote that down. And anytime I take an opportunity to point out where we failed in that, I'm not being unpatriotic. So the proposition that a critique of Israel as a nation-state and as a bona fide geopolitical player on the world stage is tantamount to antisemitism is ridiculous. It's a ridiculous proposition. And anyone who would, I'll meet anyone, anytime, anywhere, that would like to debate my record in this city and point out where it's been, anything other than ecumenical and pro-justice, I'll have that debate anytime. With that said, I just went through a campaign. Many of us up here just went through a campaign. And I spoke to literally thousands of people. And I got to tell you, most of the people I spoke to were not talking about exchanges between our police and Israel. They were talking about, can I get a job? Where am I going to live? Are the buses going to be running on time? So how did we get here? The statement, if you read it, I want to exegete the actual statement a little bit, then I'll yield. The statement, first off, it, we didn't jointly write it, although many of us agree with it and agree with elements of it. We didn't pin it as a group. It wasn't a group project. But I want you to look at the statement. Firstly, Israel is mentioned within the context of a quote from the chief. The first paragraph is the chief talking about Israel. It's in quotes. The council did not single out Israel. The council is quoting the chief in her statement. And if I wanted to just single out Israel, I think it would have been a far more eloquent statement to strike the council opposes international exchanges with any country in which Durham officers receive military-style training. If I wanted to just single out Israel, we should do away with that paragraph that mentions other countries. And let's really stick it, if we want to be that singular. I also want you to note something. It says that we oppose military-style training. Well, read that. Does that mean we can get training that's not military-style? What does military-style mean? This statement does not preclude exchanges with Israel that are outside of military-style. So I want you to take a clear look at the statement. This is, for me, it would have been an opportunity for us to positively state how we feel about policing. But it's been conflated with an issue that there are people right now earning PhDs in different slices of this issue, religiously, politically, anthropologically. So to think that any statement, and I'm not, I didn't get elected to parrot the statement of any particular group on this issue. If you will note, this statement is not the statement that JVP submitted. It wouldn't have passed because some of us found it problematic, some of the things in JVP's statement. This is not no action either. This is not verbatim what JVP submitted to us. It's a compromise. I think it could have been artful in some other ways, and there are some things, I've spoken with my colleagues offline and behind the scenes about it. But what I am encouraged about the statement is that, one, it's a positive statement of what we hold valuable in terms of policing. Now, I signed the petition. By the way, the evening that we had, there was a forum at, I believe it was the Heta Heritage Center, in which we were asked to sign it. There was no bunch of papers of text that we got from JVP on that evening. I signed it because I'm against military, I'm against exchanges of the Durham police with Israel and any other nation. Our debate and machinations in this city about how we want to policing did not occur in light of Israel. When we decided as a city how we wanted to be policed, we weren't talking about Israeli exchanges then. The chief answered the question about Israel. I'll tell you why. Because she was asked about Israel. I'm one of the people that asked her. I served on the committee that vetted our candidates to hire chiefs. She was asked specifically about Israel. She was asked specifically about Israel. Had she been asked about Syria, or North Korea, or Fiji, then she probably would have responded to any of those nations. So she was asked. So she responded. That's how Israel got in here. The council did not single out Israel. It's a quote. And in the next paragraph, we go on to say, "Oh, any country, any country." I am deeply, 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 and I will put a button on it after this, I am deeply troubled by some of the rhetoric that has surrounded this debate. I'm deeply troubled by this mayor being called a Nazi sympathizer. I'm troubled by that. I'm troubled by friends, friends, people that I deeply respect suggesting that the mere mention of a nation is somehow antisemitic. I'm offended by it because I've seen that tactic before in America as a black man living in America, when you want to critique something. We're better than that. And the debate is better than that. And I think that many of us have allowed this debate to descend into a caricature. The issue of Palestine and Israel deserves a much deeper debate and a much more respectful one. I got news for you. Whether this statement passes or not, Durham is not going to have military-style training with Israel or any other country. The chief said it before this statement came, and I believe the chief. I said to the mayor, when we discussed this, one of the options is, why do we even have to respond? Do we have to say anything? I mean, there's a whole lot of groups in this city that write me emails every day that would love to have this council spend this much time on their issue. But when you got more money, when you're better organized, when it's a sexier issue, I guess you get our attention. I'm supporting this statement, not because I think it's perfect, not because I'm an antisemite. Fight me about it if you want. I'm supporting this statement because it's a positive statement of what we want as policing. And by the way, this fire started long before JVP or anybody else brought up the Israeli issue in Durham. We've been talking about how we want to be policed for years, and it was not done in tension with the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. It was not. I urge my colleagues to support this statement, and I urge this community to keep talking with each other instead of at each other. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you can see why I waited until after Councilmember Middleton spoke. You never want to go before that, but going after is also difficult.
You never want to go either before or after Councilmember Middleton. That's my motto.
It's impossible. It's impossible to navigate. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to start, first of all, I intend to support the statement tonight. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say how much respect I have for the way that you've navigated this particular issue. I know this has been personally difficult for you. As Councilmember Middleton mentioned, I was aghast to read online some of the things that were said about you in connection with this debate. I was also deeply grateful for you, to you tonight, for speaking out against some of the remarks we heard in this chamber that were revolting. And I thank you for that. I know this has been a challenge. I think, I also want to thank my colleagues who've been with us every step of the way and thinking about this. And if it's your practice, praying about it. I've spent a lot of time doing that over the last week and a half. I've also spent some time engaged in email conversations with a number of the folks who were deeply troubled by this statement. I'm ashamed to admit, I don't think I made any headway with those folks in trying to explain why. I don't think the statement singles out Israel for the reasons that were so eloquently expressed by my colleague, Councilmember Middleton, that I don't believe that the statement is animated or evinces any kind of antisemitic feeling for, again, the reasons Councilmember Middleton said. But I do believe it's important for us to talk to each other and to listen to each other. And for that, I'm deeply grateful to those folks who spoke with me, both in person and over email. You may come away from those conversations and this vote tonight thinking that that was a sham, that it meant nothing. But I'm just here to tell you, as a person, as a human being, and as an elected official, that's just not the case. The last thing I wanted to say about this, and I know we've been here a while, is that I personally, I don't believe that it makes Durham any safer to have our police officers go overseas and receive military-style training, no matter what country hosts that training. And for that reason, I intend to support this statement tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Reese. Councilmember Caballero.
I waited till after Mark Anthony Middleton. So I just want to say that antisemitism is alive and well. Everyone in this room can recognize that. And this statement is not an example, at least to me, of antisemitism. I understand that people in this room may not agree with that. That is a difference of opinion. I want to share, several people mentioned Latin American countries this evening as examples of bad actors in the international stage. Let's just reflect on who actually trained and funded those militaries, and this is not Israel. This is the United States. The first protest I ever went to was the School of the Americas protest in the late 1990s. It was around the training of Latin American soldiers by US military. This is an issue that is very near and dear for me. I am an immigrant because of military influence and a foreign power.[1719.96] I will vote for this statement. I understand that it is hurtful, but at some point, we need to move away from militarization, period. And I don't think it's an authentic and honest conversation to say that what the United States does and what the Israelis do in forms of foreign policy is any, we don't want anything to do with that in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of comments. I wrote and emailed to everyone a longer statement on this issue that I also read at our work session, and I'll put it online, and I don't want to read it again because it's almost 10 o'clock. But I do want to make a couple of comments. The first is that we've been asked specifically by constituents in this community to speak on and deal with the issue of police exchanges with Israel, and that's not without basis. It is because these exchanges exist, because police leaders in Durham have been a part of them in the past. It is very true that this issue, even though we are being asked to deal with a very specific question, it is very true this issue has a broader political context, but so does literally every single other issue, right? That larger political context, in my opinion, doesn't preclude me, or this body, or anyone else, from speaking or having an opinion or taking action on an issue, because if it did, we would literally never do anything. Finally, there's a long history of people using the label of antisemitism to silence criticism of Israel, just as there is a long history of labeling people who criticize US foreign policy as unpatriotic. And it is intended to create a chilling effect and silence dissent and critique. We all know real antisemitism when we see it and when we hear it, and we know that, we heard some earlier tonight. And so, and I know even more now...
Excuse me, excuse me.
There's a lot of men interrupting me right now. I noticed you didn't interrupt any of the men who's...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Just tell us what she wants to do.
Excuse me, I'm really gonna have to ask everybody to please be respectful. We've all been listening a long time, and I know there's a lot of disagreement, and I know there's a lot of really strong feelings, but also, everybody needs to listen respectfully, okay? So hold the applause, hold the shouts, and let's just talk, okay? Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe now, even more, that people know antisemitism when they see it and hear it, based on the response to the antisemitism that we heard tonight. And that is not the response that we got to this statement. The majority of people who are here tonight, who have read Mayor Shul's statement, who have contacted us about it, even if they disagree with it, are not telling us that this is somehow demonizing Israel. Yeah, I'll be supporting the statement written by our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to speak to, I guess, both sides of this group a little bit, and I want to start with speaking to the folks from Jewish Voice for Peace, and I really mainly want to speak to the Jews in the room, my fellow Jews. But before I do that, I want to speak to one particular aspect of this that I think is really salient and important, and a great question that people who are against this statement are asking, which is, why Israel, why not North Korea or Syria? And I believe that the answer to that, and I think it is the right answer, has nothing to do with military aid. It has everything to do with the fact that there aren't police exchanges that I know of with Korea or Syria. And the statement is very explicit in saying that we oppose all militarized, exchange with other militarized police forces. But there are these exchanges with Israel, and we have had our police chief participate in them. So that's the reason, that's what's different. But let me now speak to, I want to speak to the folks from Jewish Voice for Peace about kind of how, what my experience of the last month has been with your campaign, maybe longer than a month, maybe it's really been several months. As far as we know, former Chief Lopez did one training with the Israeli police, and from that one training, I feel like the folks in Jewish Voice for Peace have worked hard to give the impression that Durham's Police Department is intimately involved with training with the Israeli police. And I feel like you've sought to blame Durham's connection with the Israeli police for racially biased policing in Durham, and you've cited lots of incidents of purported police misconduct to support the claim. I feel really strongly that this is a basic misunderstanding of how racialized policing happens in America, including in Durham. We live in our own country with a history of racial oppression in all of our institutions, and the problems with discriminatory policing in our country, which have been enormous and which continue to be enormous, have virtually nothing to do with Israeli society and everything to do with our own. I have received lots of emails from people living here in Durham, good people, many of whom I know, which includes the following paragraph from an email that was sent out by Jewish Voice for Peace, and these people have been sending to me. "I'm proud to live in Durham, and as a progressive city, we have no place training the police with the army of any state that has policies of occupation and apartheid. I want to make sure this does not happen again, so I'm asking you to take a stand." I've probably got 50 emails that said that. It pains me, it pains me, that so many people are being given the completely false information that our police have been training with the Israeli army, and that this should not happen again. This is so untrue. Our police have not been training with the Israeli army. There's no factual basis for that, there's not even a rumor about it, except for this email. It is so damaging to the police-community relations and everything that we're trying to accomplish. The truth matters. It especially matters in the era of Donald Trump. And no desire to win political advantage justifies making up stuff that isn't true about Durham's Police Department, and then spreading that truth all over God's creation. Attacking our Police Department through falsehoods is only going to hurt our ability to continue the police reforms we are undertaking, and is going to hurt our ability to build trust with our community, which is being told that our police have been training with the Israeli army, and that this must not happen again. And I want to stress just for a minute those police reforms. I want to say what the statement says, just so you'll get it. So in the last few years, especially in the last couple of years, the number of traffic stops in Durham have gone from 33,000 to 11,000. The number of searches in Durham in the last two years has gone from 1,200 to 400. The number of drug arrests in that same period of time has gone from 1,200 to 600. These are real reforms that are really mattering. And one of the ways in which we make that happen as a city council is to have the backs of our Police Department when they're doing the right thing, and our community has to do the same. And every time you attack them falsely, you undercut our ability to win their trust so that we are able to support them in their reform. The other thing is this, I think that these kinds of exaggerations and sometimes falsehoods are damaging, my friends in Jewish Voice for Peace, to your own cause in another way. In this case, they drove a group of rabbis, a very group of rabbis, but some of whom are very much against the Israeli occupation of the West Bank and Gaza, to write a letter claiming that you were demonizing Israel and denouncing your efforts in this petition. Those rabbis who wrote us, I know most of them, they're varied, we've heard tonight, they're varied ideologically, but there are rabbis on that list who I know well, including my rabbi, who I have talked to about this in the last few days. There are rabbis on this list who are against this policing, this policing connection, but yet they drove, they wrote us a letter denouncing what you all had done because they felt that you were saying things that weren't true. And so I would just say that telling the truth has really important positive effects for what you want to do and the political movement that you want to create. If you want to make change in the American Jewish community's response to what is happening in Israel and Palestine, then you have to be truthful. Remember who we are as Jews. I'm 67, six years before I was born, with the end of the Holocaust. The Holocaust wiped out half of us on Earth. And the prelude to the Holocaust, and what made it possible, was the lies that people told about the Jews. And the ways in which the Jews were blamed for Germany's ills and the ills of other countries in Eastern Europe who participated with the Germans. So of course, the Jewish community is sensitive to the lies, to lies that are told about us, and of course, they have a special resonance. So I would just say again, it isn't contact with the Israeli police, which has created racialized policing here in America. We have done that bad thing all on our own. To my friends in Voice for Israel, I understand as well as you do, maybe not as well as all of you do, but as well as many of you do, the emotional ties that bind us to Israel. I've traveled to Israel twice. Speaking of the Anti-Defamation League, my grandfather was president of the Anti-Defamation League in the southern part of this country for many years. I understand its value. And I understand why the Jewish Voice for Peace petition and accompanying rhetoric is so upsetting to you. Truth can't be of casualty in this discussion, and I would say to the folks in Voice for Israel, that's also what's disappointing to me in your campaign. So I'll just mention a couple of things. In emails and a recent column in the Herald Sun, you have tried to delegitimize the process that has brought us here tonight. You misled people in this column and in the emails into thinking that there would not be an open forum to discuss our statement, that this was somehow orchestrated with Jewish Voice for Peace or somebody else, which couldn't be farther from the truth. If it was orchestrated at all, which I suppose you could use the word orchestrate, it was discussions that we all had in ones and twos over a couple of weeks to try to figure out what to do. I did have a statement ready at the last work session, and it did go to the media, but it wasn't anything but a, but the same kind of discussion we have on every issue, and then to be followed tonight by a wide-open forum where everybody got to say absolutely what they wanted to. This has not been fast-tracked, as you have said, or anything other than a thorough and fair process in which all voices have been heard. In fact, I believe it's been an exceptionally open and patient process, and any implications to the contrary are false. And also to my friends in Voices for Israel, it isn't true, as you have said, that the council publicly sided with those, this is a quote, "The council publicly sided with those who falsely accused Israel of training the police to, quote, 'terrorize black and brown communities here in the US.'" The statement does not have any language like that, and you know it. I was impressed by my colleague, Gillian Johnson, at the work session when she explicitly rejected that assertion, and some of you all were there to attend that. The council's statement has no rhetoric, anything like that, yet you publicly and repeatedly says that it does. I know this issue stirs strong emotions. I can't even describe to you the emotional roller coaster I've been on about this in the last few weeks. Believe me, I get it, but it doesn't help to say things that aren't true in order to whip up support for your side. So I'll say one thing that I have been really thinking about myself in terms of, you know, how to, what do I have to say in terms of really being honest about this and the way this statement is positioned and that sort of thing? And one thing I will say, to a critique that Adam Goldstein offered tonight, and I've heard before, there's, it's no question that Chief Davis' entire statement says that she had a positive experience in her training with Israel, there's no question about that. When we put out the statement, when I mailed this, I mailed this, I don't know if I mailed it or I handed out the statement to the press, I also provided Chief Davis's entire letter. But I do think it's important to say that. I also take Chief Davis's words at face value, that she has no intention of having police exchanges with Israel. She is a very direct and strong person, and our statement endorses that stance. I agree with that stance. And I know that is where I differ from you, my friends in Voices for Israel. As our statement says, "We want our police to have the kind of training that promotes the police work we are trying to do here in Durham under the leadership of our truly outstanding police chief." And might I also add, "under the leadership of our city manager," who has really, who hired Chief Davis and has really made this happen. I don't believe that training with the Israeli police will further that kind of policing. And I also believe that there are other countries, training with other countries that have militarized police, will not help us well either. If it happens that there is a possibility of that, I'm sure that you will hear the council taking a stand on that. I am a Jew, and I am a Zionist. I believe in the existence of a Jewish state. I fear for its survival. But I know the terrible traumas visited on us as a people, we are now visiting on others in Gaza and on the West Bank. And to me, not only are our mortal souls in danger because of that, but I also believe that the survival of the Jewish state is dependent on doing justice to the Palestinians, and I do not believe that we are. And when I say "we," I believe, I include myself. So that is the context in which I view this statement. And I appreciate everything I've heard tonight, and I'm now going to ask if there's a motion on this statement.
Still moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the statement. Any more discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Close the vote.
The motion passes 6-0.